Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council. Please attend a call meeting of the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, April 16th, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Do you need to do anything?
We have one there, we have one out in California, and two had our department.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening to everybody. Do you want to set up the conversation?
Yeah. Well, actually, we've had conversation, as you all know, about shared services, looking at cities region-wide, cities talking amongst themselves areas where we can find opportunities to cut costs, which ultimately helps us go further with whether it's more spending or getting our spending under control and things of that nature. And I think the last time that we had a conversation, we talked in generalities about what are some of the possibilities that we could do as a city and as a school system to be able to merge some things. And I think last year, we had the health program, I think, School Board Member Costello Williams kind of brought that up, and I think we looked at it but never officially came back. We had some different comments that we were getting about the cost for a female employee versus a male and all of those types of things. And so I think this time around, we asked to take a hard look at that and see if there wasn't something to being able to, if we could consolidate some of those services, that buying fuel, doing whatever it is we do separately together and get some savings there. So with that, I think that led us to this conversation here, John, with whether or not we either merge the systems or just go from being a fully funded to self-funded and then merge or do a hybrid of sorts. So I think that's where we are here. And John presented, the manager presented to us at, two weeks ago, his budget, and his budget showed a $3.3 million savings in not merging, but just going from fully funded to fully insured to self-insured. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then so from that, we wanted to make sure that you all had an opportunity to look at those numbers, because I know, Mr. Chairman, you had expressed a concern the other night at the podium that those numbers didn't quite bear out what you guys had looked at. And so we want to make sure that we're comparing apples and apples, we're looking at the same thing and making sure if this is a good idea and we do have these savings, that we do it. And if the savings are there, what are the other reservations that we have as a body that would keep us from there? And I think you brought up a very important one to me, which was trust, and that's something we need to also work on. So with that, John?
Yeah, thank you, sir. To add to what the mayor said, the last time these two bodies met, you agreed to consolidate and eliminate duplication, and not only in healthcare, but in purchasing and finance, was a variety of things. So that is what went into the budget, was that conversation. I remember it very clearly. My budget includes that premise that you all agreed to in this room. I watch his nod over here and I watch his nod over there. The matter of healthcare goes back to a year. It goes back to March, April of last year. Our consultant is the Mercer Group, Ken Jeffries, who's here tonight. He's a CPA, has an MBA, and this is what he does. He gets up every day thinking about healthcare. This is his profession. And so this even dates back when Dan Pandarvis was here. And the goal was to do an analysis of the cost benefit of being fully insured versus being self-insured. Governments are always compared to the private sector. We hear such terms as best practices. And in the private sector, you will find that any company that has an appreciable number of employees, 1,000 and upwards, they're self-insured. They're self-insured because they save money. And in fact, the private sector is looking to drive that number, that threshold number, down to as low as 200. Taking that practice from the private sector, and that's been in the private sector, this is not new technology. This is decades old. It goes back more than three decades. The city of Portsmouth has been self-insured for over two decades. And the city made that decision because it was more cost-effective to be self-insured than to be fully insured. And so that conversation, to bring it current, started last year involving both the city administration and the school administration. And it culminated on June 12th in a meeting with David and, I think, Sharon Hobbs, now I wasn't there, our consultant, Antoni Smallbembry. And it resulted in this report that was discussed at that meeting. Now, the data that's in this report has been changed because time has gone on. The assumptions in here might not be correct. But there was a discussion and there were documents exchanged, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you had indicated that there hadn't been, and there had been. This was not done in the dark. This was done in cooperation between the two school administrations. I can't speak to what happened after June 12th, but the direction was clear from the last meeting was consolidate and look for ways to save the taxpayers' money. Let me give you an example. Does it make any sense to pay more in premiums than what your claims are? No, the answer is no. And that's what essentially your system does. You're paying more in insurance premiums than you are in claims. And the order of magnitude is somewhere between around $3 million. Best guess at the data that we have. But that's a nice sum of money. When you talk about $3 million, that's a lot of pennies on the tax rate. And where this money comes from is from our citizens. And where we can save money that hasn't, doesn't have an impact on instructions, I think we ought to work as hard as we can to bring about those savings. And here is an area where we can save money. It's been tested in the private sector for four decades, three or four decades. It's been tested by us. Now, it's like having a choice between buying one of two quarts of milk. If you're looking at two quarts of milk, they're both the same, except one's a dollar and one's a $1.50, you would be motivated to buy the dollar quart of milk. You save 50 cents. And if you only bought one quart of milk, that would be a one-time savings of 50 cents. But guess what? If you like milk, and I do, you'll go through that quart of milk and you'll have to buy another quart of milk. And that's the same, it's true on health insurance. Yeah, there'll be a savings the first year, you've got to have health insurance the second year. So you'll get that same savings the second year. So it's not a one-time savings. Would you make the transition from being fully insured to being self-insured, that savings is real and it goes forward from that point in time? And if it wasn't true, we would be in the vote to being fully insured, and so would be a lot of other private sector companies and public entities, counties and cities. And so on that basis, then we can debate whether it's $3 million a year or 3.5, 2 million. I think that's a fair debate. But the fundamental thing is that there's money to be saved. And why is that? When you buy insurance, you're buying it from a insurance company. That insurance company is not in the business just for, they like it. They're in the business to make money. And they also have to cover their risk. So they've got to charge in their premium the amount of money they want to make on the profit, but they also have to cover the risk. When you're self-insured, you don't have a profit. And you know precisely what your claims are. And so, yeah, there's some administrative expenses that come in, but nothing like you'd find in the, with the private insurance company. Yeah, you need a stop-loss policy for that catastrophic event. But it's about saving money, and you can do it by being self-insured. So the discussion shouldn't be, who knew what when? This conversation goes back in the spring. It shouldn't be about whether or not the two administrations met, they did, back in June. It shouldn't be about that. It should be about, how much money is there to be saved? And yeah, there still needs to be some work done, because I understand that, like, on the school side, your premiums have gone up and you have made some decisions to change your policy, and we may not have that current data. But I feel very confident that the order of magnitude that you can save is what's presented in this budget. It's big dollars when you compare it to your tax rate. So that is, there is no ulterior motive here, there's nothing sinister here. It's about bringing about efficiencies that does not impact on instructions. It's what you referred to as overhead at the last council meeting, or one of the meetings last week. If we can reduce overhead, whether that's in the insurance premiums or about consolidating services, we ought to work really hard at doing that. And we have Ken Jeffries here, and he can give you an update. But fundamentally, at the end of the day, an entity with 1,700 employees, we've got 2,000, can save money by being self-insured.
All right, thanks. Now, this was actually presented in June 12th of 2012 to who?
To David, and to Sharon, and to Tony.
And can you just real, before we dive into this, Mr. Chairman, do you have a comment or statement or something you'd like to make before we?
I'm not going to say, I don't know about the meetings that you attended. I can only state from the meetings I've attended, and that is with our insurance carriers or the vendors that we use. And at the time, when we were looking into this, and I don't know the timeframe or the date, but moving to a self-insurance, was to manage healthcare better, long-term savings. What those long-term savings would be, the vendors that we use, Wells Fargo, and I was a member of that meeting, and that's the only meeting that I've been aware of on our side, and that was long-term. They would not even try to come up with a figure, because we were still going to be looking at administrative costs. People, in other words, different people doing different things. Yes, it's a possibility of losing people, but no one had any figures, because that was my main thing, how much money can we save out of this? The long term is the effort, and how you manage it will tell you how much it will be. There were no dollar figures given to us at the time, and this is by our group.
So you had Wells Fargo to do a similar analysis?
We did a similar thing, and it was for to manage our program to help. Eventually, they said how well it was managed would be determined how much we would save. But they would not come up with a dollar figure, because dealing with the manageability of the program. And we were looking at this for the possibility of merging with the city, as a possibility. And that was, this is as far as it has gotten. And the next thing I know, we're tied with the figure, we're going to save $3 million. I know it didn't come from outside, and all people has not, this is the first we've heard of, but when I heard of it the other night in council chambers.
Okay. These are all good points. This is not like a differential equation in calculus where it's really fuzzy math. It's fairly simple. You figure out how much are you paying in insurance premiums? We can all do that. We pay insurance. And then you figure out how much you're paying in claims. If you're paying more in premiums than you're paying in claims, you have one of those moments where you're saying, why? If you're paying $17 million in premiums and $13 million in claims, why do that? Why not go self-insured and save $4 million? Or whatever that delta is, that differential?
And the only bogey would be administrative and other costs, and as long as you maintain and control those, then those could become fixed costs, and you would know how much it would cost you to do that. Can we briefly go through this, high level, John?
Well, we can. And again, remember, this is now a year old.
I understand.
Okay, it was assumptions that we've got no feedback on, and I'm not throwing rocks, please understand that. But again, I think the goal should certainly, between David and me, is to save money where money can be saved.
I think we all want that. I think that's what we wanted for the council, the reason why we said, let's look into this. And I think where we are now is we're going to approve a budget. If it's 3.3, we need to make sure that number is 3.3. If it's not 3.3, if it's 2, that's a delta. I'm concerned about the delta, and if they're not satisfied, we need to make sure we got a number that we put in the budget as a placeholder, so.
Now, remember, I didn't say it was 3.3 for next year, because you do health insurance on a calendar year.
Right, ramp up in January.
No, no, it's half of that. Just like, we're going to make the migration to Munis. They're on Munis for payroll, because one of the things that you all talked about in this room was coming up with a consolidated payroll system. So we're going to work hard between now and January to make the migration from our payroll software program to Munis. Making it?
Is that what y'all use, Munis?
Make it on January 1 is important, because the tax year is January 1. And so the point of the matter is that, when I said there was $3 million to be saved, only half of that's.
Half of that for them.
That's right. Now, if I may, I'd like to introduce Ken Jeffries.
Counselor.
We have some questions.
Okay, all right, we've got one chair, yes, ma'am.
Thank you all, Mayor Wright, Chairman Bridge, and City Manager Rowe. I brought up the discussion about consolidating employees, merging, that see if we could get a better plan rate. I never mentioned merging our departments, like finance or purchasing or anything else. I talked about the plans, put more people into the plan to see if we could get a better rate.
Cost saving.
Yes, cost saving. And if self-insured is what we get, then that's fine, that's what we want. Well, we had spoken with Wells Fargo, and you spoke with Mercer, and I feel like it should be done like any other big project in the city, where you require that we go out and get three vendors, because Wells Fargo, I felt, was looking out for Wells Fargo and whomever. So we, and whatever Mercer has to say to us, then I think we should get this from all three different people, because everyone has their own stake in it. But at no time did I say merge finance. Your finance department is in disarray. I work for the city. I know eight or 10 of the people that have left. So why would we want to put our finance department into a finance department that's in turmoil? And so I listened to you at the, I've been to every meeting, the work session, the city council meeting, and you keep throwing out these terms like we're merging this, you've talked with David, and David is fine with this, and David hadn't said a thing to the school board. And we're sitting there like stunned, because we're not a department of the city. You know, I work for the city, so in my role tonight, I'm speaking as a school board member, because I do know a lot about city government as well. So I'm saying that we're sitting there, and it was as if the school system was being absorbed by the city council, and with no respect, no nothing to the board members, which we do have to vote on it. We are quite different from maybe the city manager, because Dr. Stuckridge, whatever he does, he cannot hire a person, he cannot fire a person. It has to be voted on on the board. And we have not met since to even discuss any of this. We were, sent the emails to come tonight, our meeting is Thursday, but I've heard we're merging finance, purchasing, payroll, you know, we were looking at saving money. We want to save money. I believe in the self-insured. But then now you threw out, we were saving 3.5 million if we went to self-insurance. And I mean, we're blindside, we don't have any information. We're just like this council. You present to them the budgets, and our department head and Dr. Stuckridge presents to us the budget. So we have to go on those facts that they give us. So I just want to make that clear, that we have no idea what all this is about. We were just trying to get a budget approved for the system.
Well, let me help, if I may. You all met at one of your quarterly meetings in this room, okay? And you all agreed that to consolidate, to eliminate duplication. I did not dream this. And we talked about in the area, we talked about.
We said we would look at it.
Look at the minutes.
Look at the minutes.
The very next day, I went down to see David. David was at Churchland. He didn't get back that afternoon because he needed to be at Churchland that afternoon. The very next day, he comes to see me. And we pick up immediately the conversation that these two boards, the people who we work for, talked about eliminating duplication. And we talked about where can we make this work the quickest? And so we looked at purchasing, and we looked at payroll as the low-hanging fruit. But that direction, we didn't dream it up. You all discussed it, council said it, you nodded, you being the school board, you're sitting about the same spot. Now, I wasn't present when you brought up the merger of the two health systems, and there's some goofy notion that it can't be done. Well, it can be done. There was some goofy notion about the fact that there are young teachers who are female and they have babies. Well, which costs more, a normal birth or an elderly person, an older person with diabetes, a chronic illness? It all balances out. That should not keep us from merging the system. Merging the system gives you a little bit more savings. Where the big savings come, you don't have to get merged the systems in order to become self-insured. Any entity can make that decision. And what I'm telling you is that it's happening frequently in the private sector, because it's more.
We agree with that. We're not disputing.
Dr. Name?
Several things. First of all, I have to look at the minutes, and I don't think I've missed any meetings, and I don't ever remember voting on anything about merging anything. Now, so until I look at the minutes, I won't know. Affordable healthcare, I don't know where it is and what it's doing, but they have a limit as to how much insurance companies can take as profit. There's a limit built in. I've talked with Senator, I mean Congressman Scott about it and all that kind of stuff. There's a limit, okay? And if they have more than that, they have to give you the money back. And these companies have admitted that this is the case as far as Affordable Healthcare Act is concerned. And I'm not sure what has to be done in this state. I know some things they don't want, but I don't know if they can block that particular thing that's supposed to be active already. All right? Now, the administrators, I know with the school board, don't make the final decisions. So if it hasn't come to the school board, not for a nod, but for a vote, it hasn't happened. And I don't remember having a vote unless we look at the minutes back, and I'm going to say, as far as I know, we didn't have a vote. I have a fairly good memory on stuff like that. And I went to the meetings with them, you know, being in healthcare and looking at it and knowing about it. And we didn't ever vote, as far as I know, to merge anything. The other thing we have to look at is merging with the city. And I do love the city and give them first press preference, but merging with V S B A, the Virginia School Boards Association. I was on the insurance committee once with them and how they work with us for all kinds of insurance and everything like that. I don't know exactly with healthcare insurance and where we are now and where that is, but we should also look at that, so make an informed decision on all of it. So those are three things we need to look at. What we're being offered tonight, V S B A, and Affordable Healthcare. So I don't think we can make, I hope nobody's thinking we're going to make a decision tonight to say, oh, yes, that's what we are doing and flailing off on it. So I just feel that we have to look at the whole situation and look at the minutes, because I don't think we ever voted to do anything.
Just a point of clarification, you did mention just the health piece.
Yes.
We all in here collectively never voted. We all nodded that we wanted to find opportunities where we could work together and have savings. You never voted and we never voted. So if that's the impression that you got, then we apologize. There was never a decision. We did ask to go look at these things so we can come back and have meetings like we're having today, to discuss it, flush it out, and then make a determination afterwards. So this is that, in my view, that first step of, here's some low-hanging fruit that they've identified. We make sure that these numbers are right, the variables that we're all using are correct to the best of our ability, and then we'll decide based on that. And then as a city, if it looks like we need to recalibrate the next year and the next year, we'll do those things. These savings could get better, but I think you've got to have these conversations and start these things, or else we'll never get there. So I don't, I don't, I don't think, I hope no one implied that you actually voted on that. No, ma'am, you did not.
Thank you.
But we did all agree that wherever we could try to find savings, that we would do it. And I think that's what John is saying. He just said, this is low-hanging fruit. Some of these other areas were kind of low-hanging fruit. Dave, okay, hold on. Dave, do you have any comments?
I'm waiting here for Man from Mercer.
Okay. We're going to let Mr. Moody comment, and then we'd like for him to present here. Hopefully, we can proceed in that kind of fashion. This is, this is, this is dirty water when you're in, when you're starting to look at things that, I mean, but only us can clear it up.
Okay.
Okay, there are going to be things that we know and don't know, and things that, you know, we don't want to make implications that someone said something, but in order to get this and do the best for our citizens and for the taxpayers, which is what all of our goals should be, we've got to go through some of these types of exercises. So with that, oh, Mr. Moody, and then we'll get Mr. Jeffries up here.
Well, you hit on it a little bit, Mayor. I think the question's not one of territorial, it's one of exactly that. I don't think anybody at this table is opposed to saving $3 million.
Right.
And being self-insured is not something from outer space. Companies, and I've worked with some companies that've gone that route, and in fact, most large companies do that because of that very reason, because it saves money and provides adequate coverage. So it's, you know, a carrier, I don't know the relationship with Wells Fargo, but if the existing carrier, obviously, they're going to, they're going to be defensive about it, because they don't want to lose your business, quite frankly. But, you know, a dollar saved on the school board side, it doesn't matter what side it's on, whether it's on your ledger, whether it's on our ledger, is a dollar saved with the taxpayers. And I think that's how we need to proceed.
Okay, good point.
Okay. So to tee up this conversation, again, this will not be a presentation on this, because this is.
I understand, just a high level.
Okay. Second, Mercer does, we don't buy anything but their time and their knowledge. We don't buy insurance. To my knowledge, you don't sell insurance. What they do is help us save money. So it's not like they have a financial interest in anything that we do. We're not buying anything from them except their knowledge and their expertise in this field. So with that, this is Ken Jeffries. He's at our account. He has both public and private accounts. One of his accounts is Norfolk, and the Norfolk account is the city of Norfolk, the city school system, and P R H A. 12,000 employees. The city of Virginia Beach, 15,000 employees. So, and then he's got private sector clients, Capital One. So again, I like your analogy. This is not from outer space. This is not new technology. This is not like we're trying to get a patent on something that we just invented. This is tried and true stuff that's been around for, in the private sector, for four decades, for us, two decades. Ken?
Thank you for having me. As Mr. Rowe mentioned, this report that you have is outdated. We presented this back in 2012 with information we had at that time. Subsequently, we understand that premiums have changed, they've dropped quite a bit based on some plan design changes. And we have new information, we're working with MIRA on this. And so we are going to revise this analysis based on the new. And so we are going to revise this analysis based on the new data we have and come back and give the information to everybody involved. But I think the general premise and how we're going to go through this is going to be the same. I think the one difference is we're going to have actual 2013 premiums now because we know what that number is. We're going to still have to project 2013 claims, but we're going to base that on actual claims that the schools have experienced over the last several years and do an estimate of what those claims would be. I think John said it very well. A lot of the savings is in the fact that when you buy insurance from a third party, they're going to charge you a profit margin. They're not going to assume the risk for free. I mean, they're going to make, they're going to put a risk charge in there. Those are things that you can eliminate when you're self-funded. Now, you will have to buy stop loss insurance because when you're self-funded, you're exposed to the risk. And if you have catastrophic claims, you want to make sure you have stop loss insurance in place to cap your exposure on those, on those claims. So when we do come back, we're going to have actual better data than, than we had the first time on premiums. We'll have claims projections and we'll see what the new savings numbers are. Is there any specific questions with regards to self-funding that anybody might have? Yes, sir?
In this report here, are you sure that you took in all of our claims? Are you absolutely sure that you've got all our claims accounted for in this year?
We had the claims that were reported by Optima that were sent to us at this period of time.
We don't believe there were a full year of claims and we believe you're off by several million dollars.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, we have.
And that, and that figure has been thrown around in this budget year. And we've questioned Mr. Manager over those claims, about 3 million dollars. We don't believe they're there. Mr. Jeffries isn't saying they're there right now. We don't think they're there. And yet, that's part of balancing our budget and cutting our budget. We've got a budget right now that in the last five years, if you approve the budget the manager has given you, we will lose over 10 million dollars that the city's revenue has gone into our budget. We will lose 10 million dollars. I can show you that tonight. I don't know how we're supposed to be operate when we've lost 10 million dollars from this city over a period when the city's CAFR shows that the city has taken in a lot more revenue over those times, but we've been cut. That's what I'm concerned about, Mr. Mayor. Figures are being thrown around like 3 million dollars. Mr. Jeffries can't justify that there's 3 million dollar savings in here. We don't believe there's 3 million, yet that's been reported over and over again, and we've questioned that. We have questioned that with city administration. And yet, that number keeps coming up. And we are personally embarrassed because it looks like we don't know how to manage our insurance claims or our insurance policies.
So what you'll do is just go through high level, how we derive at this. You will get the exact data with the school system and we'll plug those numbers in and make sure we capture a whole year's worth of claims and all of the correct things.
And premiums, exactly. We'll match up, you know, liabilities and assets, we'll match them together.
Okay.
And, and like the last time, we'll present this to the city and schools and we'll hopefully get their feedback at that time.
What's the timetable for that?
I think we will have the analysis complete by the end of next week.
By the end of next week? Okay.
You include the, the issue, you talked about the stop loss insurance and what percentage of any savings that would, that would take?
It's hard to say because stop loss has so many variables to it. It depends on what stop loss level you choose to get your insurance by. So, for example, you could pick a $250,000 stop loss level, which would be one price. But if you pick a half million dollar stop loss level, it's a much cheaper price. So it's really going to depend on that.
Well, we can do a menu. We can say it's at this level, it's at that level, it's at that level. That way you can, it's like going to a à la carte.
Because that would include the administrative cost that the mayor was figuring out.
And let me talk about the data. My understanding that this looked at two years' worth of claims data.
From my first data.
Yeah. And so whether or not it, it had all your claims, that was a discussion that regrettably could have taken place, didn't take place back in June.
No, sir, that discussion did take place, Mr. Rowe.
Those eggs are broken now. Let's, let's make a good omelet out of this thing. Whether we save, if the company makes a 1% profit, why should you have to pay the profit with taxpayers' dollars? Even if you could save a million dollars, that's a penny and a half on your tax rate. So I think I said, you know, the discussion shouldn't be, be about who's in the room, who's not in the room, who said what. It ought to be working hard to come up with that number. Coming up with how much can we save?
All right, let's proceed on this.
How much do we pay Mercer and for, exactly what do we pay Mercer?
We pay Mercer for their knowledge. We don't buy any insurance.
Yeah, just for their knowledge, that's good. Now, how much do we pay them for their knowledge?
Do you know, Ken? Do you know, Tony?
We have a contract, I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon?
We put the, I don't mean to be leaning on you, Dr. Stuckwich. We put a consultant bid out when we put our R F P out for health insurance. So we have a five-year contract with them. And the city has been paying that when I met with Mr. Bridgeford and Dr. Stuckwich. The city is taking on that cost.
So you're, you're paying a health, paying for health insurance?
No, no, no. The consulting work they do for us. We're paying for all this work that they've done so far.
So you pay who?
We pay Mercer to do this work that they're doing for you all to do this.
And what is the work that they're doing for us besides giving us information on what we already have, on what we have done for each other and what, how much it costs each other and what we can say? What are the information they're giving us? That's all the work. And how much does that charge, cost?
I would have to go downstairs and look. I mean, we have a contract.
I need, yeah, but we need all of that, including the length of the contract before we can make a decision.
We can get you that, Dr. Dang.
But, but that's city paid.
That's the city contract, right.
That's city paid. That's not going to impact.
We have to have all of that information. This is the first time I'm hearing it, I have to ask about it.
I didn't know you had.
We, we can get all of that information. We're fine. We're fine. Thank you. All right, sir, proceed.
I think that's it.
Okay. So by next week, you'll be able to get actuals? Are we going to get one year's worth? How far back are we planning to look? How far back should we look?
Well, we probably look back to the last two years with the data, but we're going to project 2013 for you and probably do a 14 projection as well, just so you have some sense of what those savings might be. And before we, and actually, I'd love to vet this with the schools.
Sir?
I'd like to vet this with the schools before we come back to this body to make sure we're all on the same page.
Absolutely. Very good. Okay. Mr. Meeks?
I think one of the questions we needed to know was, what do y'all want to, I mean, what are we going to combine? I mean, obviously, it's a miscommunication. I guess that would be a question to Bridgeford versus Stuckwich because he can't do nothing unless it's voted on and you're the chair, so.
He can't do anything either.
Well, I'm one person. I've got eight other board members and it takes all those collectively, these five, four will have to do anything. And right now, unless I'm wrong, I don't think you have anyone that's really in the merge, even trust the city to merge with us.
That information.
It's back to the trust thing, just like this 3.5 million dollars we hear. You're going to save this 3.5 million dollars. It looks like the 3.5 million dollars is going to come off our skin and not your skin.
Trust. You could pay it at 6.5 million dollars, it's trust. $700,000 to an email a couple of weeks ago to spend before end of the year. Trust. Trust, we're, we're, we're supposed to be stewards of the people's money and we're not being that. If you looked at your budget, it's 17 pages. You're asking for 163 million dollars. You go to any other other cities, you got, you got a budget between 100 and some pages to 500 pages and they're asking for less or more. You're asking for a lot of money and you give us 17 pages? If I was citizens, I'd be jumping up and down, 17 pages to describe 163 million dollars? Seriously?
But we didn't ask you for 163 million. We asked you for 46 million.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You know, I don't want to throw a grenade in this operation, but I keep hearing about the trust factor, like we don't trust you guys. You know, if I recall, about 60 days ago, a grand jury issued a report and we weren't the ones nailed to the wall on trust. You know, I don't, I want to go back under that bridge, but let me tell you something, that trust, citizens are counting on us to work together, to foster a working relationship and to keep pointing the finger and say, you know, basically what you're saying, we can't trust you, you folks. I don't want to hear that. The citizens are counting on us to put together a budget. They're also counting on us to save money so we don't have, we all, our tax, real estate tax rate's the highest in the region, we all know that. And they're counting on us not only to stay where we are, but to lessen that tax rate so we can put, give you more money and have more money to, to put into our schools. And to keep pointing the finger at each other and say, I don't trust you, I don't trust this one, that's not going to make it. Every time, your speech at last council meeting about trust, you know, I'd pull out the grand jury report and I don't think we want to read that again.
I don't mind if you do.
You can read it.
Hold on. Let's.
I'll read it. I'm trying to read it.
I will respond by saying this. I think every penny of that money was accounted for and went directly into the school system. And I don't remember who's using it. I don't remember the exact words, but I think that money now is being touted as part of a public relations on TV. Look at the new school portion of having rehabilitation that we've done with it. That's where that money went, the majority of it.
I'm not talking about that, that money. I'm just talking about that report said that we had exercised more accountability. And in fact, it specifically said that we had to institute category funding.
And we, and we will operate on the categorical funding. However, I still state again, every single dime of that money was accounted for in the school system.
It passed out.
Let's just, Dr. Edmonds?
I'd like to say first, that's a done deal, we're beating a dead horse.
Yes, thank you.
I think the first step with trust is stepping out, taking the first step. It's not talking about combining anything, it's just looking at the possibility of could it be possible for the health to be combined? I think that's the only issue that we ought to look at. We're not looking at trying to combine. Whether they have 16 pages or 100 pages, we still get the same information, but that's not important as well either. But what's important is this synergy moment right here. Coming together at this point to see is there a possibility if we can do that? If we can't?
We look at that.
We don't. But at least we should, at least look at the possibility. And that's where this moment can be a great moment, where we can come together as these two bodies to see if that will be a palatable thing to do.
Mr. Lamb?
Well, I didn't have my hand up, but I, but I will speak with regards to what I'm hearing here. I've taken some notes and so forth. This is the first time I have seen this right here. I mean, even Mercer themselves, if I understood or heard him correctly, he's going to get back with us next week on, on more accurate numbers with regards to how it all fits. And with everything that's going on here and hearing the discussions of so on and so forth, I for one would, would like to look at this myself thoroughly before I think that there can be any discussion being discussed or so forth. I do agree with Dr. Edmonds with regards to, we all agree that we need to save, save money, come with an understanding and synergy and so forth. But right here and right now, I'm not sure if that's being accomplished or if, or if we're even in the same boat with this. Again, this is the first time I've, I've taken a, a look at this and listening with city manager Rowe and even Dr. Stuckwich and so forth, there's really not even agreement on, on meetings and what was discussed in, in, in any of this. So I agree, we need to come up with a, with a plan, but I'm not sure if that's even getting done right here this evening.
Ms. Weems?
Thank you, Mayor. The whole idea of coming together, I think, is to try to move forward and come together. And if we keep looking back, we're not going to get there.
Absolutely.
The idea of merging the plans, as I said, I brought up the idea and I said that we needed facts. We needed factual information from several sources. We were not able to make a decision based on old data or whatever. And, but at our, at the presentation, if I recall correctly, the manager took the 3.5 million or something as part of our budget and that, that would incentivize us to go to whatever. Now, believe me, I have brought it up for two or three times. I want to save money. I think that when you put more people in the pool, you can. But we still, we said, we didn't want to do anything to hurt city employees or school board employees because today a city employee told me, no, we don't want to do that because we're not paying any more money. So we want to look at the facts to see if it's worthwhile for the group to come together. If we got thrown all out of proportion was the merging of the departments or the different areas. That is not anything, I know, there is not a vote on this school board and Dr. Stuckwich cannot do it. There's not a vote on this school board to merge any department. Because who would be the new CFO? Would it be Mira or would it be this one down? So that's not going to work. So, you know, we're not interested in merging anything. We wanted to merge the people to get a, a plan. So I don't know where we got off on all of that, but, you know, and he can't do it, like he said. The board has to vote, just like the council has to vote. But if we could look at bringing the pool to get the facts to see if we can save money, that was the, the whole.
And we'll get both of those pieces of information. And it is a two-pronged approach though, not quite now merging. I think the only thing there is this savings is just by going to uninsured, to fully insured to that. And then maybe the potential, if there's some opportunities later. Yes, sir.
Again, the, the money to be saved is in self-insurance, not in merger, okay? In fact, I think, let's take that out of our vocabulary, the merger. There are marginal savings when we merge and it's doable. It's not an impossible thing. Number one. But number two, so that we don't waste your time, you need to tell David and me whether or not to continue to work together on trying to consolidate what you agreed to consolidate in that work session in here.
We never agreed on anything. It's same agree.
We started working, I told you what happened the very next day, I went to David and he, he came to me on Thursday. Now, if you don't want us to, to try to not have two purchasing agents in this building, which makes no sense, and not to have two payroll managers in this building, which makes no sense, then please tell us so we can work on something else. But I can tell you that if you really want transparency, if the citizens of Portsmouth want to see something that's very transparent, then do away with the mystery of having two of everything. Do away with the mystery of having two payrolls. Have one. And then you'll bring about a savings. But you need to decide because I have task, I have task to staff to get this done in a timely fashion. If you don't, if we're not going to do it, if that's the corporate decision of these two bodies, then let us know so we can work on something else.
Okay. Ms. Randall?
After listening to everything, it's evident, we do not have a great own basis in terms of what is it we're looking for and why is that we feel a need for the groups to come together? It would make sense that if we were talking about exploring, and that was my understanding, we would be exploring this, the possibilities. And I thought I would use that word because that doesn't mean you already determine it. You're going out and look at avenues of how it possibly could be done. Pull those things together, maybe a little subcommittee, two or three, to pull something together as a possible starting pawing for discussions. And then work from there and branch out from there. But this way, it's no way you can come because the school board is an elected board by the people and the council is an elected board. So we're all reporting to the same public. I think we could come together and work through like a subcommittee of representatives and come up with some alternatives that we could offer up as a suggestive way for moving in a certain direction or. a certain direction or what would be the positives of doing it one way as opposed to the negatives. You've got to look at it both ways. It's a smaller group to come together to do something. I don't know how you can come together and agree on anything in a large gathering like this because we really have not talked that much among ourselves in terms of what are we looking for? What are the advantages that we would have? What would be the cost savings when we speak about advantages and how we are going to report through things? You know, this way, I don't see how we can ever come to any resolve because we have two separate plans and we're talking about bringing them together into one.
Yes, Mayor.
And you've got to look at all the parts.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was one of the people in that quarterly meeting who spoke to looking at the possibilities of savings and consolidations and wherever we could save, that we look into it. And I still think, still think we ought to. Now, if the two staffs get together and y'all put together numbers and the school board decide they don't want to do it, fine. And the city council decides they don't want to do it, then fine. But I think we owe it to ourselves and to the citizens to look at the possibilities of saving the money. And I'm not using consolidate, I'm not using merging, but self-insured and self-insured, if it saves us money, you know, we all look at doing it. And if we decide not to do it, that's, you know, we're two elected bodies. If one body decides not to do it, it doesn't happen. But I think we owe it to ourselves to see the data so that the two bodies can look at the data and make, and decide if it makes sense for us and for our citizens to do it. I mean, is that, is that, I mean?
I don't think anybody disagrees with that. I think it's a matter of terminology and the fact that, right. So, we'll get that information, we'll make sure we look at it and then we'll, next time, make sure everybody has seen what we have here. And any questions, we may want to converse back and forth before we come back together here. But if there's an opportunity in this budget cycle to be able to do that, we need to capitalize on that because that is probably the only window of time that we're looking at because to be able to ratify this budget by May the 14th, we need to make sure that we bake these numbers in if they're savings or not. So, it's not like we got a lot of time. So, I think, Ms. Randall, you mentioned the two pieces again. We're not talking about merging now. We're just talking about going to self-insured. So, if self-insured brings us these savings, and when you said half for this year for starting in January, then I think if all of that makes sense to all of us, then we need to do that.
We need detailed, accurate information. Maybe I've been trying to do science too long. I like exact stuff as much as possible. Might not be able to think through it, but that's why I like to try to think through. Another thing is if this was June 12th, 2012, why are we just seeing it?
That's a question for somebody else, not for.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'll be glad to respond to that.
I beg your pardon?
We just had it.
Come on, y'all.
I'm not ready to talk to the board about it. We are not at that point. We're at the administrative level looking at these numbers. Mayor Falotanker talked to Mr. Jeffries last summer, told him the numbers were not correct. We talked to Mr. Rowe, we said, these numbers are not correct because they did not take all of our claims into account. He did not answer my question about that this evening because he knows this is not an accurate report. But yet, this report was put in the budget process this year. It's old, it's inaccurate, and I have a problem with that. An old inaccurate report being said, this is $3 million this school board can save, that is personally embarrassing to me and it's an insult when this, excuse me, John, when this is an old document. Mr. Rowe was not even here when this was done. He doesn't come till November when I was dealing with this. We've had concerns about this since the day we've seen it. We have no problem with looking at self-insurance. We were looking at self-insurance. We've been looking at it self-insurance. It doesn't add up, but we're willing to take another look with a different vendor. But we need more accurate, and I have a problem when inaccurate information and old information comes into the current budget process to offset city cuts to our budget. Mr. Mayor, that's my problem.
Mr. Mayor, this is not meant to be a debate between David and me, but this report was brought to you this evening because the comment that was made at the last meeting that no report had been given to the schools, and that's not a true statement. I'm not going to speak to the internal communication between administration and the school board. It's none of my business. I can't tell you why or any reason why the report didn't get to the school board. It was not this report that I made my recommendation. It was taken into consideration the feedback that you and I had in several different meetings and the data that was being generated. They came up for, they caught the savings of 3.3. You will not find 3.3 in that study. And to say that it's inaccurate, yes, I said that right up front. And you can take offense with that statement if you like.
I do.
Well, that's fine. But the decision to be self-insured is entirely the school board. They can make that on their own, okay? They don't need you. But I can tell you that from 40 years of experience in the public sector as a manager, I can tell you that you're not going to get anything done administratively if you're concerned about TERF. I put our finance department up against anybody's. Yeah, it's a short bench, but they're dead gum good. They're very good. And if we're concerned about who's going to, what window they're going to be sitting at, what floor we're going to be sitting at, we'll never get there.
Absolutely.
And you need to tell us whether or not to continue to work. We made the, you know, decision to not have two garage. Having two garages makes sense, one for the schools, one for the city. No. Does it make sense to have two purchasing agents? Does it make sense to have two payroll managers? When you report the same stuff to the IRS and to the Virginia Department of Taxation, you operate under the same rules? If the answer is yes, well, then we're going to just continue the duplications.
Mr. Meeks.
Mayor, I want to bring up one. We all got this.
The school trends data.
Yes. This is up to date. You want up to date data, that you'll be embarrassed. You read this data that we all got, and I will give this to Joseph and y'all can make copies of it. After you read that, you'll be embarrassed of your performance.
You have to come in.
Oh, just read that.
You act like God wrote that.
Just read the data.
God wrote it?
You said you was embarrassed by something that was said. That's data, new data, up to date data on schools. You take that back. I'll meet you anytime you want to discuss it, Dr. Stuckwich.
Well, that's very unprofessional to do that anyway.
Well, it's okay as long as God wrote it.
Then he should have given it to Dr. Stuckwich.
Did God write it or Jesus wrote it? Which one?
Well, we don't care who it is, but you, we come to a meeting and you do this, talking about embarrassing.
Embarrassing is what he, I'll take you.
I think we're really, we're really going to work together just fine.
No, we're not working, we're not voting to do anything with you.
We need to, Mr. Chairman, if we could get Mr. Rowe this information over to the chair. And this also needs to be information with all the other data that we get to collect to look at what we do. And this isn't just something we need to be using against other people, we need to be using against ourselves and the city.
That's true.
I mean, it's, this is what, a comparison analysis to all the other districts and do we have this very same information on our city?
We do. In fact, that information in that is from the state superintendent, state school superintendent. And I'm kill that title, state superintendent of instruction.
Public instruction.
Yeah. And it's also from the VEA salary survey that's done annually that this particular report covers 132 school districts, 131 reported. So, it's not cooked up data. And I think we need to be really frank with ourselves. You are what you measure. If you don't measure anything, then you're not going to mount to much. And I think it's important that we measure what we do. I think we need to measure how effective we are on spending our money. And that's what the, this report does.
Who's measuring you, Dr., Mr.? Who's measuring you in this city?
There's a similar report that's done by the Auditor of Public Accounts that compares all the local governments in Virginia, the same type of.
Do we have that? Did you?
I'll get you a copy. I'll get every board member a copy.
Make sure it's for two months you've been here.
But I think it's important as we look at ourselves to measure ourselves. And I'm not trying to measure you, but I think that the data is there, it's collected by and analyzed by the state Department of Education, not by John Rowe.
What is the nature of that information? What use is it? How is it derived and what is it to be used for? I mean, if you're going to bring it out and talk about it tonight, I think the people who are listening and who will hear about this should know all of that information. Otherwise, you've said nothing to them and I hope they are aware that you haven't given them any information because you didn't say what the data was, whether it's worthwhile or not, because I know the state, the state does a lot of things that's wrong. I've talked about the Department of Education. They complain that when students graduate from school, they still can't do anything, some of them. I say, it's your fault. You set the standards for graduation. Someone said, maybe you should talk to somebody else who was saying that. But they do that intentionally so that some students will not succeed. They make it so they will fail. And then they blame the school. When we had, before that, I said, you had to have a C average to graduate. There was nobody who was graduating who didn't get a job or couldn't go to school. But they changed that, so I couldn't say it anymore. But then they complained.
I don't know if this adds to the conversation or not, but one of the, one of the things that I said, council, this is council's budget. They need to be comfortable in setting the priorities for the next budget year, 2014, 13, 14. And typically, again, my 40 years' worth of experience, when there's a difference of opinion on what to provide and local funding for the school boards, often the comment is made from the schools that this is going to affect classroom sizes with the notion being that the bigger the size of the classroom, it, you get less quality. If a teacher is teaching nine students versus 15, you get a different quality with a smaller classroom.
Research shows that.
Well, let me finish, please. That the, I think it's important to measure our classroom size to the state. And I think that you'll find some very interesting data there. And the state breaks it down into two chunks, K through seven and eight through 12. And if you look at the data closely, we're, we have lower classroom sizes, and I'm using this as an example, than the state average. We have lower classroom sizes than any other school district in Hampton Roads. So, I think it's fair to have the discussion, can you nudge that number up? And the order of magnitude is not a half a student, it's something like three students. If it's one, and then another, another data point, and David, I'm not picking on you, but the state average for the number of administrators per thousand students, the state average is something like 2.6. We have 4.2. And all of our sister jurisdictions in Hampton Roads are below us. If you look at the number of instructional personnel per thousand students, the state average is about 100. We have 130. If you look at the number of administrative support total, we're above the state average. In every category, we're above the state average. Maybe that's where we want to be.
Mr. Rowe?
You have been fully accredited.
Let me be right, Mr. Penn.
You know, Mr. Rowe, when I'm looking at, I'm looking at this report, Mr. Meeks, I mean, this is the first time that I've seen this, you know, and we're invited to a meeting tonight and I've received no information. You're giving me a report that I have never had a chance to study. I mean, I'm just, I mean, it, you're, I feel like tonight I'm being blindsided and accused of something that, you know, and we're trying to sit here and defend ourselves and you've already had the data and now you're blindsiding the school board and our superintendent. Here's the bottom line, Mr. Rowe. What you just said is based on 2010, 2011. That's what it says and it's 4.84 and the statewide is 2.6. That's 2010. That's old data. Now, if you go through and you get to your pupil teacher ratio, then you get into 2012. I mean, we can sit here all night long and point fingers at each other and what are we accomplishing? Absolutely nothing. I mean, this letter that Dr. Stuckwich wrote to you really upset me, Mr. Rowe, that when the board approved our budget, that for some reason, you didn't get it. But in the newspaper, it's like I didn't get the school board's approved budget. I mean, you're on the sixth floor, he's on the third floor, and you guys have had, y'all been communicating and all of a sudden, it's like, I mean, we've lost an assistant superintendent who died. And then we've had a board clerk that she's been on medical leave and Dr. Stuckwich is supposed to remember all of these things to carry up a report to the sixth floor. And then, of course, he writes a letter of apology to you. The thing about it is, I can't believe that you and Dr. Stuckwich, that you would even make a comment in the paper that you didn't receive the budget.
If I may, that's, that comment was made at the budget presentation. It was not mean spirited.
Well, it sure came across that way.
Well, listen to me, please. Since you're attacking me.
Well, I'm not attacking you. Well.
I don't know who bugged you.
I made the comment, which was a, not a mean spirited statement at all. Listen to the tape. I made a matter of fact statement that we did not have the school board budget and we did not. Now, I went down to David's office on the day that you all met, which was that first night. And I told David that I was going to recommend to council that we not fund the budget at the same level, okay? Well, I had been communicating that to David through email, but this was a face-to-face conversation with David in his office. David asked me to tell him the number and I did not. And David says, I'm not going to tell anybody. But my, my protocol is that I've got to tell council first. I hope you appreciate that. But I did tell David along the way that there was going to be no way that I could recommend to council and meet the imperatives of having a balanced budget without a tax increase and give the same amount of funding. When I made that presentation to council the next week, it wasn't shame on you for not getting the budget up. We had until April 1. April 1 was that Monday. I would ask you to look at that and, you know, look at it from your heart because you won't find any ulterior motive to smear or research David or the school board in my comment. I just made a statement of fact. The other thing is that the reason why I sent that to council, they need to have information to make them comfortable in making decisions about the budget. It was not intended to ambush you or David or to make you all feel bad. Yeah, I did recommend to council that we reduce your operating budget by 7.8 million. It's really 6.8 because we're putting the $1 million in the, for school buses. And that's a tough decision to make. And I don't think it's fair to criticize council when they want information so that they can make a informed decision. That's my job to give them that information. I would expect that's what you want from your school superintendent. You want to make good decisions. So, if you want to criticize me for taking state collected data and giving it to the members of city council so they can make an informed decision, go ahead. I think it's wrongheaded. I think it's wrong-hearted. And I think we're going down the wrong path. And what gets hurt in this discussion are the kids. We only be looking for ways to save money and put that money right back into instruction.
Absolutely.
And it just, it's beyond.
That's what we're trying to do.
You've got to say something.
Are you done, sir? Okay, Dr. Daniels.
Okay, let me say this. The state of Virginia says that we know how to educate our children and we have been doing it. When we had the budget two or three years ago that we thought we should have, every school was fully accredited according to the state, never mind what city council has to say. That is not important, okay? Not for student performance. Not for student performance. It's important for budget and stuff like that, but not student performance. If the cities say we are fully accredited. This Friday, we have a school that is so outstanding, an elementary school, until the president of the State Board of Education is coming to have breakfast with us and celebrate how well they are doing. So if we're doing that, we don't care what city council thinks about student performance. So we can go to some other issue. As long as the state, which is the official body to evaluate schools, think we are doing okay with student performance, I don't care what anybody else thinks.
Ms. Williams.
I, I just wanted to say to the manager that that data that you received, tell that to my daughter that had her, had my granddaughter in John Tyler in kindergarten, and they had 29 in the class when they started. And they had to pull those class, those kids out. And she called me, "I'm on the school board." I called the principal, and I called the assistant superintendent because the classroom was overflowing. So I don't know what you're reading up there, but I'm telling you the realistic facts that are here. And I, I am truly disappointed because I was one of those people that pushed and supported Mr. Rowe. But to do what you did tonight and to bring this out and blindside us, I just don't see that as professional at all. Because I would never, we would never come to your meeting and do that. And, and I just, that's all I need to say. And, and I'm really disappointed.
I'm a little puzzled. I didn't know we were going to discuss this tonight either, but now that it's on the table-
What is it?
Don't y'all receive this information? These benchmark things from the state, you know, in various categories?
I don't know what, I don't know what you're talking about.
Y'all have never seen this?
No. Seen it.
We haven't seen what he's pulled out. We can go to the websites. We've never seen-
Well, I mean, this is from the state. I would, I would think y'all would probably know this inside and out, because they're benchmarks.
Benchmarks about what?
Well, you, you name it. Pupil teacher ratio, eight to 12, total instructional-
That's what you call benchmarks?
... per thousand. Was a bench-
I thought benchmarks were, were performance.
It's a benchmark against the performance of other school districts. And the state average, I call that a benchmark.
Okay.
It, it tells you how you compare to the other districts in the region.
What's the date on that data?
2010, 2011. And some of it's, some of it's 2012, I think, 2011, 2012. So it's 2012, 2013. It's got everything from salaries to staffing.
And how do we rank? I don't want the people who are listening to be in suspense. How do we rank?
Well, there's a lot of different categories.
Well, for each one, since you brought it up.
Well, I, I'm just asking the question. Do y'all periodically get this?
You can go to the website, I guess, just like Mr. Rowe.
We look at that. So we'll- Information from the administration. This information is selectively taken off the state report. The state report is much larger than this. Here's one piece in here that's 19, 2008, '09. That's five-year-old data right there in this report. And that's selectively taken. The superintendent's annual report is a very thick document. We give feedback to this board continuously.
Everybody's acting like they haven't seen this.
I think the question that the city council needs to ask is-
Please.
From this point forward, where we are right now, without going backwards, I think Council Mayor, Vice Mayor Cherry said, you know, "Let's not go backward, let's look forward." From this point forward, where are we going? Where are we going? Right now, the current budget that you're about to approve, forget the $10 million that came forward from last year, that doesn't exist anymore. You have to look at city revenue. City manager is moving 3.4 million from our current budget forward to the next year's budget. That won't be there the following year. And that's not city revenue. That's come from the school board, of which the majority of our money comes from the state. Add that with another 2.8 reduction. Let's adjust for the buses, let's be fair, move that out. So you're about a 1.8 reduction. You're looking at more than a $5 million reduction, coupled with a $4 million reduction in capital projects that took place five years ago and another 900 and some thousand that took place about five years ago. During the years, about five years back and farther, this city council was supporting schools. We had a governor that was supporting schools. We got all of our schools fully accredited. Since that time, state funding has dropped off, and right now, we are facing the largest cut in city funding to the schools in the 10 years I've been here. Now, you saw the trend for our school system for the last several years. We had them all accredited. We're starting to lose schools by a point here, a point there, and a graduation index. If this council thinks that by cutting our budget by $5 million is going to help this trend, I'm not sure what your logic is. But I think this council has to decide itself, what is your tolerance for schools that aren't accredited? Because if you keep cutting our budget and say, "Everything's fine, everything in the school system's fine," we will do the best we can. We have to. We will balance our budget. But with the budget you have before you right now, we will be cutting more teachers in a school system. And I can document this. It's from the, the Access College Foundation. Our three high schools ranked number one, number three, and number four in the poorest high schools in Southampton Roads. That might answer some of your questions. We are desperately poor in this city. Our kids are desperately at risk, and you're getting ready to cut our budget by $5 million additional dollars. That's where we are this evening. We're at a point in time where you just have to decide, are you going to support schools? Are you not going to support schools? Victor Frankl says in his book, Man's Search for Meaning, "The opposite of love is not hate, is indifference." And we are facing indifference, both from the state and from city council at this time. If you want to cut our budget, we can't prevent you from cutting our budget. You control everything. You control all the money that comes to the school system. We will operate with the money that is given to us. You can take data like this and selectively pull what you want from the state report. There's hundreds of pages that document what Portsmouth does with the state. Great. I can probably pull another set that'll make us look great. But the question is accreditation, because the value of property in this city and the perception of this city in this region rides with how many schools are accredited. We had them all there at one time. City council was really not looking at what we were doing, not giving us any money, slowly eating away at the money. We used money to cover our own capital projects. Did we do it correctly? No. If I could go back and do it over again the last five years, yes, I would do it over again. I can't be assured that the city would work with me because I've had those problems. That's why I did what I did. I'll tell you right now. I kept this school together. I pulled this school system together. I've worked hard for 10 years, and you're getting ready to destroy everything we've built in this school system. You can see what's happening. We're slowly going down. The tests are getting more difficult. The accountability and the standards are getting higher. Our kids are getting poorer. We've got more students now than we had five years ago, and you're getting ready to cut our budget by $5 million.
Mr. Perrin.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Jerry.
To add to this, there's a, there's a direct correlation, and I wanted to open the meeting with that, but I really wanted to get this self-insurance piece out of the way. I didn't think that would take as long. But he's speaking to points that I had down. There's a direct correlation. Yes, we do have more people in because of the at-risk students. We have to. If we didn't have those people in, we'd be worse than what we are now. So yes, we have more staff than we should. We had to bite the bullet, but that's why the braves were better. That's why the accreditation was better. And to your report that you had, that young lady there, she's got an all kind of words for the report she's given. Maybe it's because they're simplistic that we have a few reports. I don't know. I haven't looked at what you got. But I know one thing, when we look at how we rank with the rest of the schools around here, per cost, per student, we're in range. We're where we should be. The question I have for you is, you rather have 10,000, what is it, $10,600 per student, 1,100, 11,000?
Around 11,000.
Or 16,000 for inmate? Because that's what you're paying. When I came back from California, first thing I looked in the paper, what the rates of jail. Hey, I'm the, I'm the third or fourth cheapest jail in this area, and I pride myself on that. Because I can get an inmate for 16,000, but it still costs me more for that inmate than it costs them what you're giving us for the, for the kid to school. You're raising them. Your destiny, you're sending them on a destiny to fail if you don't give us what we need to get done. Mr. Perrin. And then Dr. Edmonds.
Councilman Randall, you and I were at TJ together.
That's good to hear.
Taught me a whole lot when I, young man from, and you know that we've always, when you look at data, that you, you look at apples and apples. Now, if you look at this, you're comparing us, Mr. Meeks, with Virginia Beach. You're comparing us with Chesapeake, with York, and Williamsburg and Jame City. They're not urban school divisions.
They are not.
So you can't compare Portsmouth with Virginia Beach and Newport News, Chesapeake. I mean, Hampton is, Hampton is pretty close, urban, and, yeah, no. And then you've got Norfolk, you've got, you've got Hampton, Norfolk, and Portsmouth. The rest of them, no. Now, Mr. Rowe, you go into a kindergarten classroom tomorrow, who has 25 students and no paraprofessional. We've been asking for paraprofessionals to be placed back in this budget. She's got to teach 25 students. The bottom line is that, yes, it costs more, Councilman Moody, to educate urban students. It costs more. Now, Virginia Beach has computers and they, and, and I know that, I know that Newport News does because that's, I mean, I know what they, they have. And we're trying to provide our students with these kinds of tools so our children will be just as competitive with anybody else. They've got to go out in this world and they, not, I mean, compete with these school divisions. They've got to compete nationally, internationally, global. I mean, this is a global world now. And our students have to have the tools, the technology that they need in order to compete. Now, you're looking at data that somebody, I don't know who pulled this data together, but it was dirty, it's dirty pool to do it on this board. Because we've got data, we submitted with our budget, that shows current information, that shows apples and apples and not apples and oranges. So when you start pointing your finger about us and having, having a higher pupil teacher ratio and more administrators, you better compare us with other school divisions like Portsmouth.
We know, Claude, to your point, no. Claude, to your point-
Mr. Moody, you haven't been recognized. Mr. Moody.
The students will be competing against those other cities.
You have not been recognized, Mr. Moody. We're not going to get in a debate. Dr. Edmonds, and then Mr. Moody, you can speak.
Well, first of all, I think our schools are the most important resource here in the city. I ran on that in my campaign, and I still believe it. Our schools cannot always be pictured with group with other school systems. We have to look at our school for ourselves where it is. And our schools have achieved a lot of great things, I've seen in, in the circle. To have been blindsided like that, certainly, Mr. Perrin, that shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened the way it happened. But be that as it may, I won't, I'm always supportive of the school, and I think most of the council members on the council are very supportive of the school. And we want to do everything that's necessary. I realize that class size, class size means a lot. If you've got over 20 students in a class, you need a paraprofessional.
That's right.
Because it's not going to work. I don't care what we think. We're not in that education motif. You all are.
Right.
And you are experts that we expect to bring things to the table to us in that regard. But as far as money, money is tight.
Right.
Everywhere. We tightening our belts on everything. And to throw innuendos at each other is not the place to do that.
I agree with you.
If we can't, these two groups can't reason together, then our city is in bad shape.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
And we're going to disagree, but we shouldn't ever be so disagreeable that we start becoming personal.
Right.
The other piece is that if our schools are going to start, we have to take a thousand-mile journey, begins with the first step.
Right.
And if we can just look at just this one piece of insurance, seeing how that would work out. Nobody said we were buying into it. We're just looking at it, investigating it, to see how palatable it would be, rather than going off in all these other tantrums to try to come to some conclusion or some synergy moment as to can we adequately do this? And if we can do this, then we can do other things, one step at a time.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Claude, the point I was making, I don't think I've mentioned any of these figures and beaten anybody over the head with them. In fact, I didn't pull the report out. But to your point, saying that since we have this report, that we have to pull out Virginia Beach and Chesapeake and Suffolk, I think we continually need to compare ourselves to those cities. If you're not comparing yourself to, to somebody that's ranking higher, you will never achieve their level or exceed their level. So to say that we always got to compare ourselves to other urban schools, I don't buy that philosophy. I say, "Let's, let's compete against everybody." I think our students are capable, because once they graduate, guess what? They're going to be competing against students from Virginia Beach and Suffolk and Chesapeake for that job. I interview kids from all those schools, including Portsmouth. So I'm confident that our kids can compete against them. So we, we can't, we can't weed those out and say, "We just want to benchmark ourselves against the other urban cities." I think that's doing a tremendous disservice to our kids. I think we can be as good as Virginia Beach and the Chespeaks of the world.
Mr. Lane.
Hey. I initially thought that this meeting was starting out talking about insurance, merging the two, you know, programs and so forth. We have been now all over the board with everything that you can imagine under the sun. And I, I don't know. I'm looking around, and I don't know how much is actually getting accomplished here this evening. It, it's almost as though cooler heads needs to prevail. Now, I don't know what that means, but I think, you know, before, before we get any uglier or get off topic, maybe we need to come up with a, a short-term plan of meeting together again with more data, up-to-date data and so forth. Or maybe, as what Ms. Randall said, pick a committee that would, that would, a committee from city council and a committee from school board side, get together and meet, possibly the question would be over the insurance or over this budget or so forth, and then come back together before the budget needs to be finalized. Because right now, and I'm in special education as a teacher, this is not looking like teamwork at all. And, and right now, it's looking very much like a lot of anger and animosity, and it doesn't take much to see that. So I'm not sure how much we're going to get resolved here this evening by, by continuously pointing out or bringing out this report or this and so forth, when the discussion is to be about the, the insurance. If, if we can't go back to that and come up with some reasonable plan or expectation, I'm not sure why we're still sitting here.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
To your point, I, I agree with you, Ted. And I think this is what happens when you come into a meeting and, I didn't see an agenda for it other than that thing. So I, I think what you see is what you get. Now, I don't think we need to invent another subcommittee. I think this council's got two liaisons.
Let them meet then.
And y'all have two liaisons. Why can't they come together and come up with an agenda for the next time we meet? Because that, that's what you get. We've been all over the map. I agree with you. And people at home watching this, they can't, they can't have a good comfort level that there's a lot of cooperation between these two bodies right now.
Then if it's the liaison-
Dr. Daniels.
Okay. I think we can do something similar to what is being described. Committees, as far as I'm concerned, never make final decisions. So after the committees meet, we should go back. I know for the school board, and I know how city council make their decisions, I assume they vote. And we can vote and decide what we think we want to do based on the information we have. Then after that decision is made, we can simply present the decision. And we won't have to go through, you know, all kinds of changes and nonsense on what is being involved. And to me, that is what we usually do for almost everything else, and that's what we did for our own- did for our own budget. When we did it, we got together and, the way we always do, we looked at everything, studied the situation, had accurate information on what we were going to do, and then we voted. And then, the decision was made there. The decision can't be made in a joint meeting. The decision is made when there was a school board votes on what it's planning to do. If something has to change, we'll have to go back and talk to the entire board with it on the agenda, knowing that that's what's going to be discussed. And the people who are interested can decide what they want to do by coming to the meeting. If they have two ways that are pulling on them, they can decide which one. And I think that's what we should do, what we always have done about that. And I know we need accurate information, and that information from 10 months ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Parent, don't we want to wrap this up?
Yeah, wrap it up.
Thank you all very much for meeting tonight. The thing I guess I'm confused about is that we have a Wells Fargo report that was done for the school board, and then we have a Mercer report. And you have two different companies that did two different studies. And how can we merge these two entities together? Because they're going to, Wells Fargo is going to look at their data, and we, I know in 2010, when I first got on the board, they made a presentation, and they were comparing the claims, and they were comparing that we had an aged population, and that our number of our employees, we had a higher percentage of employees that were diabetics and high... All of that data they gave us in 2010. And then I think that we made up, that we were deciding that we wanted, how can we merge together? Because many, many years ago, we were looking at school division, cities were looking at ways they can come together to merge, and that never happened. Cities never incorporated. It seems to me that you've got a Wells Fargo report, and you've got this report. How can you get the data that's going to come together and get some realistic data? And when you're talking about benchmarking, I mean, TQM quality, I mean, the bottom line is you always, Councilman Moody, is that you benchmark with other school divisions or other industries, because you want to always raise the level of competency, always. And the only reason I brought that up is because you're looking at classroom size. When you're in an urban school division, it takes more personnel than in Virginia Beach, in some of the areas in Virginia Beach. That's all I was bringing. I mean, I agree. Our kids have to be competitive globally, and we always have to benchmark. And that's the point I was trying to make. But how in the world can we bring two studies together so that we're all going to agree that this is the best data? I mean, I don't know how you do that.
You would think that if you get both of those pieces of data, and they both were given the same mission...
Right.
Then they should be coming back with similar numbers. We want to know, you want to know, how much savings in there is in us all becoming, you becoming self-insured. And that should not be a whole lot of formulas and a whole lot of other things. It should be some very basic math that both, either one of these folks can come back with. Now, it may be 3 million or 2 million, and then we decide which number we use to use in our budget to reallocate or reprogram to other areas. But it shouldn't be that big of a gap. So we need to make sure that whatever we're asking our consultants or your consultants, we're asking the same thing, and they're using the exact same data, and then we'll get that.
Right.
With that, one question before we... Dr. Stuckwish, what do you see as the biggest challenge here with causing this trend to go down from since we got up to 100% accreditation?
Multiple challenges, Mr. Mayor, as I said. Tests are more rigorous, standards are higher, students are more at risk, and if the current city budget goes through, between the state and the city, we will have had $24 million removed from our budget in the last five years. We cannot, we need right now, we've got 12 teaching positions that we desperately need to put in next year, because of some math issues and some social studies issues. With the current budget in front of you, we will be cutting positions again. 12 teachers' positions cost $1.2 million. This is not a cheap business. We have cut over 180 teacher positions out of this school division. If you do the math, that's over $12 million in teaching positions out of this school We can't, a $5 million cut, which is what it actually is in city revenue coming into our budget. Because again, 3.4 is our money, probably state money, being moved forward, it will not be there the following year. So we're looking at a little over a $5 million cut. That's adjusting for the buses. When you're in a downward trend like this, and I think I can say that I've proven, and I know how to get schools accredited. When I came here, we had three.
You sure did.
Three, I remind you.
Sure did.
We got them all. People thought it would be, I was told it was impossible to do it. But we did it, because we had the support of City Council, and we had the support of Governor Warner. And as important as that money was, it was the emotional support that we got. Everybody was behind us, everybody was cheering us on. We made it. Those times are changing. And as I've said, with the budget you have before you, it will be the biggest single cut that we've taken in 10 years. The money that City Council gave us five, I think about six years ago, when you were working on teacher salaries, you remember Ms. Randall, Mr. Moody was here?
We did it.
We were working on teacher salary, all that will disappear in one year.
That's right.
This coming year. All of that that you built up over those couple of years to try to that, that is all going to be taken away this next year. And then, when you add in the money that was taken for capital projects, we're down. We're down. And I'm not, I'll show you the numbers if people want to see them. Over $10 million in city revenue going to the city, going to the schools, in the last five years. At the same time, we're down $14 million from the state. I'm not sure how I'm supposed to get the job done. And I understand that class sizes are somewhat larger. I can go back and handpick money off of state reports and make us look great. Anybody can do that. One of these things in here is five years old. Where's the data for the last four years? That was handpicked when our graduation rate was down. We picked our graduation rate up from in the '60s to the '80s, and Churchland is in the '90s. Okay? And Churchland ranks third most at-risk school division in Southampton Road, and we're in the '90s. We expect Wilson to go over 85 this year and make the state standards. Norfolk will be into the '80s, we expect to make it that year. That's called hard work. Our people are working hard out there. And with this budget, we don't know if we can even work with the state to give the 2% raise. That's at risk with the cuts that are being made. And I think the folks have to trust me to manage the school division and not the city manager. I do know a little bit more about how to run a school division and how to operate one. And I would appreciate your support and your confidence with what I've done for this city in the last 10 years.
Let me ask you one other thing. Explain to me this report here. What does this thing showing up?
That comes from the Access College Foundation. And what they're doing on this report is they're showing you the number of kids that are free and reduced lunch, because that's how in public school we measure at-risk, okay? You notice that for the entire Southampton Road area, there's more, but they come lower on this list. At the top of the list is I.C. Norcom High School. Second on the list is Booker T. Washington. Third on the list is Woodrow Wilson. Fourth on the list is Churchland. This is an at-risk index. So if you wonder why we need resources in this school division, that's about as graphic as you can get. Because this came as a shock to me, that we were three out of the top four in terms of at-risk students in our high schools. Our high schools reflect the rest of our student population.
And how recent is this data?
This year.
This year.
Came out. I don't know what the year they pulled it off. The publication is this year, Ms. Mayor Wright. I'm not sure when they pulled it, but it's probably fairly recent. But I didn't pull the data. I just saw this in their mailing from Access.
Okay. Ms. Randall?
Okay. I don't know if I should say anything, by virtue of the fact I have watched the whole dynamics in this room. And it carries my mind back, Mr. Parent. When we had to look at things very realistically and work with our children, we did it.
We did.
We didn't have the books, we didn't have anything, because people had confidence in the fact that the people who hired the people and put them in the classrooms had competent people there, and they were dedicated. It does not do anything to our public perception at all with this kind of distrust, as if something has gone on wrong in one department or the other. We have other factors that we are dealing with. The home backgrounds of children are different. A whole lot of factors in society are impacting on what goes on in the home. Even the faith-based communities, I'm speaking to the preachers and everybody, have not been able to bring everybody in where we can help them the way we need to. We've done what we could do, but we cannot get ahead pointing the finger, one group at the other group. We're in this ballgame together.
We got to be.
If we don't, Claude, you know where I'm coming from.
Hello?
We learned how to be brothers and sisters because we care...
Right.
About the people around us. We have to stop pointing fingers, and this is what I viewed around this table. And it really hurt me to hear that, because I was one of the ones who had to draw the lines for the integrations of Portsmouth Public Schools. I drew the lines.
Yes, you did.
I took the bullets fired at my house for doing it, because I believed in doing the right thing, and the newspaper will bear this out, am I not right?
That's right.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Right.
And then, I hit back-to-back heart attacks behind it. But I stayed because I believed in the future of our city, and I believed in our children. And I think unless we can come together and talk on one accord, we are not going to make any headway. We don't need to point fingers. We need to put our heads, our hearts, and our minds together, and look at what's best for the people of Portsmouth. We aren't getting younger and younger leaders in our city. We are getting children that are going to grow up and take our fights. And I think we need to be able to resolve conflicts in a way to make the city better than to point fingers. It's been a good discussion. But let's try to recognize that we are all in this ballgame together. We are all trying to make the city better. And the city of Portsmouth, tomorrow, is with the children that are sitting in these classrooms out here today.
Amen.
And if we don't train them now, Lord help, what the grandchildren will grow up into. And I'm finished with it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
It's been very disheartening to hear this discussion.
I want to thank each and every one of you for coming. I do think this was constructive, because in order for us to move forward, we have got to table these things, discuss them, move on, and look to where we're all trying to go. And that's what I'm hoping that we can accomplish out of this. Hopefully, we'll get this report, and we can look at this one issue, and see if this is an issue that makes sense for all of us. You decide, we will look at the numbers, and we'll decide, and hopefully, we can come up with something that we both can agree on. Again, it is about the children, and if we can take that 3 million, or 2 million, or whatever that number is, Mr. Chairman, and use that in classrooms, and use that to bring in additional help in some of the largest classrooms, then that's what we want to do. And so, I think that's all of our objective. But I think it's a good discussion. Unfortunately, we...
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think the most important thing is to realize, sure, we're measured against Virginia Beach, we're measured against Chesapeake, but we're measured against them, and we're doing it, a lot of it without the amount of money being poured in the system that other systems are doing.
That's right.
We've had a lot of people leave this system, go to others and say, I mean, we don't see how you can do it. They don't get the support or the resources, or the resources are put in the wrong places. I think Portsmouth has gotten the biggest bang for its buck. We've got nine members on this board that are concerned about kids. And we want to make sure it's successful. But I think one thing you're going to find out about the board is, we're not going to roll over if somebody tried to slap us.
Right.
I'll go back to that old adage, you slap me one time, fine. You slap me a second time, I'll slap your back. And I think it's gotten to the point where the pointing at this board has gotten too vindictive. And because we've sat back and taken it, it's beginning to be more vindictive. We're not going to take it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. I want to thank each and every one of you all for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All set.
I need to...
We go make things public, and people think, or like the superintendent said, that they're sitting here with their $3 million savings that they purposely won't do. And I think, just listening from their perspective, presenting that without giving them a shot at it and making sure that we don't flush that out, it's something that you and the superintendent and your offices need to flush out before, I think, it comes to this board or that board, so we're not into this type of atmosphere. So I think we're all in favor of looking for cost savings, and I think they are too. I think it was presentation and how the information was put out. And I'm not blaming you, anybody else, but they said they were stunned and shocked. I think I asked that the presentation of the budget, had you talked with David and them about what you were presenting there? So...
And the answer is yes.
And the answer is yes. And, okay, so we need to make sure now that our liaisons and their liaisons understand that here's the information we have, can we have a subcommittee meeting here on this information before we come back to our full boards? And to make sure that there isn't a communication fall-down on our side, their side. I want to get out of this side business, and the data is what the data is. And then, we need to make sure that they're able to articulate to us why those numbers are. And they're exactly right. These numbers in urban schools, and what we have, and the challenges we have, they're different from other schools. But I'm a person that believes in measuring. We have to measure ourselves, we need to measure ourselves with other folks, just as an indication of one element of the things. That is not the deciding factor, what some reporters pulled out. I mean, we all know that. We can pull data out to make us look bad, or good, or in the middle.
Or exaggerated.
It's how we get that data, and then how we communicate it amongst ourselves and with them. So we need to, and I don't think, I think that's the message I heard out of there. I think they're saying, blindsided, I didn't know, and all of that. And that's not your job to brief them. That's Mr. Dr. Stuckwish, and the chair, and his board, to make sure they're aware of the communications that we're having. So in no way I'm implying that's you. But from what I picked up there, it's a trust, blindside, you had this data and I didn't have it, and all that. And that is disturbing. I mean, I'd be just as upset if I were them and I hadn't seen this data.
Sit down and look at it.
And we're in here discussing it. So, Dr. Edmonds?
I want to ask Mr. Manager, thank you, Mayor. John, our major purpose was coming in to really discuss, looking at the possibility of self-insurance.
Tonight, you scheduled the meeting to have a work session on the budget.
But with the school members here?
Well, I wasn't aware of that until mid-afternoon, probably about 2:00, that they had been invited. I had devoted today to get ready for this meeting, although...
Remember, I extended the invitation at the last council meeting, when the chairman came up to the last council meeting. And I thought that was disturbing, to have the chair of the school board come up and address us in a council meeting, which once again lets the public think that we're not together, he or they think we're trying to do something. So at that meeting, I invited them to come to our next budget discussion to be able to do that. Did I not?
Well, the reason I asked that is because maybe if you had known in a more timely manner, you could have done some dialogue with the school chairman and the superintendent, which would have made this a little bit more easier.
Yes, sir. And I called David at 12:15 on my cell phone. I called his cell phone, got a voicemail. I called Brandon, and some Brandon, I left a message for David, because I wanted him to know that Ken was coming, and that I was going to have a discussion too about Simondsdale. I mean, you all individually, not every one of you, but a good number of you have called me about Simondsdale, because the reporters called you. And so I thought it would be good to have that discussion. When I couldn't get him, I asked Brandon to call his number, and Brandon got voicemail too, and called his office and got his cell phone. It wasn't until late in the afternoon that I learned that they were going to be here, and that it had been invited. And, Mr. Mayor, I did go back and look at the tape, because I was trying to figure this out.
Who invited you?
And the sequence of the speaking was Jim came up, Mr. Bridgeford spoke, and then you spoke, and then Ms. Randall spoke, and then you spoke. and then you spoke, and then Ms. Randall spoke, and then you spoke. The last thing you said, "I invite you and any member of the school board to come back." Yeah. So, at 5, about 5:20, I saw the tape, and I realized that, yeah, that can serve as an invitation. But you're right, I did not know that they were gonna be in here. I could have predicted that the school board would... I'm looking for a kind word to say, be displeased with my recommendation to cut our funding. Do I believe that they can still deliver a good product? I firmly do. Education is really an important component of what makes this city great.
Absolutely.
And I understand what you just said, Mayor, about urban classrooms, but I had a Corsica. You all remember a Corsica. I had it for 10 years. It was one of the best cars I'd ever had. It had 232,000 miles, but I couldn't throw enough money at that car to make it better. I couldn't save it with money. And I'm afraid the message that you heard tonight, if you don't throw money at the school system, it's not gonna get better. And I think that's wrong-headed. I think there's a lot of case studies out there that says, that's not the way you measure things, not by the amount of money that you throw at something. Yeah, you have to look at input and output.
Yes.
And we didn't try to cook the books. I'm not trying to... And I mean what I say. I want you guys to be really comfortable in making your decision. And if they want to fuss at me for giving you information, I'm not gonna stop. I'm gonna give you information.
Yeah.
So that you feel comfortable in making your decision. That was not an attempt to embarrass the school board. That was an attempt to be a cheap shot. The data was the most current, just like you asked him.
Where'd you get that?
Yeah, yeah.
And where was it taken?
And the answer was, it's published this year, but you don't know when the data came from. It's not a trick. I mean, I'm too old to try to do that. That's not the right way. You know, you treat each other fairly, you treat each other with love and compassion, and that's my intent with them. I mean, we... Some things were said in here out of the heat of the discussion.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna take them personally.
Painful, I guess.
But I'm gonna tell you, I'll call David tomorrow and continue to... I'm gonna say, I ask counsel, you want me to continue? He's mad. He told me he's mad. That's no secret. I said, "Don't do anything rash." We had a little exchange. I hope the mic didn't pick up what we said. If it did, I apologize to the whole world. But...
John, we've gotta have these conversations. Whether we don't like them or not, we have to have them. And again, there are years of a lot of tension and mistrust built up in these organizations, and this is not unique to Portsmouth.
Oh, absolutely.
You go to Suffolk and Virginia Beach and everywhere else, but as Bishop likes to say, it is how we, as these two bodies, handle it. And we need to address this head-on, get over the personal feelings, and get the data out, and see how the data talks to what we're trying to do and where we're trying to go. And then, we can use all of these things as instruments, but none of this stuff is precise enough to take this one and use, or this one to use, or this one. It is relative to what we're trying to do here and the direction we're trying to go in. So, I don't know how we get beyond that feeling piece, other than have more meetings like this, but we need to make sure the next time that the data is shared and they have it and say, "Here's what, if you guys are interested in coming up, here's what we need to discuss." And that's why I think a lot of that. And some of the other stuff, I would not take it personally either, because I think they were just upset, and so, like, they were being, you know... Yes, sir, Mr. Moody.
Well, John, I was as surprised as you when I got here and the school board was here. I think we set ourselves up for just this kind of meeting. Obviously, you didn't know about it until the 11th hour. They came in, I got a feeling, since they were the ones being invited, that they came in with expectations that we had a lot of information and an agenda for them. And we didn't have an agenda, and it kind of just morphed into a finger-pointing session over figures and idle discussion. So, I think if we're gonna invite somebody next time to come here, that number one, you know about it, this council imparts to you what we want to discuss with them, and that David Stuckwish and James Bridgeford and the school board knows why they're coming here. It was obvious that they didn't.
Who invited them?
And I think that's why we had, I think the mayor invited them.
We invited them at the last meeting when the chairman came up and took issue with the $3.3 million that we had in the budget. That is a huge dollar amount.
Yeah.
That we assume that's gonna be saved. And when the chair came up in a public meeting and said, "We don't agree with those figures," I said, "You and your board are welcome to be at our next meeting."
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
And then, we published that this meeting is gonna be tonight, you're welcome to come, so you can dispute those if you like. That's the only way you're gonna get to this conversation, so...
They were ready for the disputing.
Well, I mean, and that's why you want to have this meeting, and it isn't about feelings, it's about the figures. Yes, sir.
The Comprehensiveness Annual Financial Report. I didn't make up none of these numbers, and I don't know who's on their board even understands these numbers. And I'm not judging.
Don't do that.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, the numbers don't lie. If you take this report and you break it down, you can see where the numbers are, where the money was spent, how much money's left. All right? They took $6 million and paid their APIT. All right? If they had five of that this year, we wouldn't be here today. Is that correct? Observation. But please, go look at this when you make your decision. And I mean, the children are the ones that are getting beat up here.
Yes.
I agree with that. But I also agree, you can't throw money to make something run better.
You're sure right.
Councilman Mees, I disagree with you, because I don't think we can give enough money to help our schools even get better than what they are. I've seen the improvement in our schools. I've seen where they were and where they are now, and they need to be commended for the job that they've done. It wasn't just Dr. Stuckwith, but it was the whole school board that had something to do with that, and the council here as well. And I think we ought to have a sense of pride to know that our schools got to the point where when they were not accredited, that they were accredited. If we lose that strong support of our school system, what's the use of economic development? And we have lousy schools. So, our best resources that we ought to rely on is making sure that our schools are strong. I respectfully disagree with you.
But when you have Dr. Stuckwith on our first meeting, and John was there, and I asked him, he said, "The doors open to ask anything." I asked him about the APIT. He said, "If I had a city council or a city manager I could work with, I would have done things differently." That does not give me a warm and fuzzy feeling over $6 million. And that's why, you know, that's eight or nine cents on the tax roll.
I didn't have a joint agenda, excuse me, I couldn't get that word out, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with the Simonstale debt financing. I wanted to make sure that, first, you got my email, and there were some members of council who seemed surprised when we had the briefing on the capital improvements plan, that it appeared to me that there was some who felt that the schools had made a commitment to pay the debt service for the term of the bonds. The bonds expire in 2026. That's not my assumption in this budget. My assumption in this budget is that this is city debt. The city council's the only entity in this city that has taxing authority, not the school board. You've got the only authority to issue bonds, not the school board. So, it is very much your debt. There's nothing in the record that indicates that the school board agreed that they would pay the debt service from the first payment, which happened to be last year, to the year What happened was that the schools gave the city two payments that totaled $200, made The city took that money and set it aside in the capital improvements budget. David, I understand, thought that that money was gonna be used for furnishing for the schools, for that school. The city started to program that money to use for debt service. So, the first chunk of debt service, the first year's debt service, which happened to be last year, $560,000, got paid out of that sum of money. This budget uses that same sum of money to pay the debt service for 2013, 2014. And it's programmed to continue to draw on that until it gets down to nothing, which happens in 2016. I'm doing this from now. At that time, it's partial funding, and that year, whatever's left in that, from that $2.75 plus general fund money, will pay the debt service, and then, from that point forward, the debt service will be paid out of the general fund. So, you've been getting calls from the reporter. I don't think that the schools welched on their promise. I mean, I wasn't there, but there's nothing that leads me to believe that they promised to pay. In fact, there's email traffic between Betty and Dan that's dances, "We don't have any money." So, it's pretty clear from their perspective that the money wasn't there. This budget sets us down a path to have only one CIP for the city. And that CIP has everything in it. It has both city projects and school projects. It's got the general fund and utility fund, and the projects that may come up from time to time from the schools. And that's important, because only you can raise the taxes to fund that. Only you can authorize to incur debt, and not just short-term debt, but for long-term debt. So, I wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with that. Did my email make sense?
It made sense.
I sat and wondered, and it bothered me, because I look at this Simonstale project as a symbol of excellence and of something that we all worked together, the school system, the city, the state, and the federal government. And we've got a $40 million school that we were able to build for $18 million. And had it not been for President Obama and those funds that he set aside to be able to allow us to do that, we wouldn't have that school now. And I didn't respond to the reporter, because I'm listening to all this noise going around, and I'm going, "Only in Portsmouth can we take something as beautiful as what we've created."
State of the art, yes.
And turn it into a story of who said, he shared, and all of that. And I think that kind of stuff needs to stop.
Yeah.
This is truly a model. This is something that I went to Washington, DC, and spoke in front of the mayors about, of what we were able to do here. We had last year, a mayor to come, two mayors to come from the state of Massachusetts to look at Simonstale Elementary School, and I walked them to that school. And each one of them didn't have a school close to that, and their price stack was about $50 million. And so, it troubles me how we get wrapped around the axle and all of these things. This is, in my view, I share exactly what you're saying, it's the city debt, the city's gonna pay for the debt service, and we need to move on with it. But I thought your email was clear.
It was, it was very clear.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mayor. And I think only Ms. Randall and Mr. Moody were here when that all got started, and the rest of us came in as it was in progress, and it was a good deal. But I want to go to something. I just want to publicly, and for everybody to know, thank Mr. Rowe for his efforts.
Yeah.
You know, I spent, he took up my last two weekends reading all the stuff, but be careful about sending me stuff, because I will read it and ask you questions later, as you know. But, you know, I'm holding in front of me, we asked him, between emails, questions here, and me stopping by his office, we asked him probably 29,000 questions. But I think the answer to every question that I asked him is in this binder in excruciating detail. And you should have known that when I didn't call you back again, so...
It's like reading War and Peace.
Yes.
Absolutely. So, for me and for my colleagues who I've talked to, we appreciate it, we appreciate your efforts.
Yes. Would you share when you got your comment from the mayor? When did you get your attaboy from the mayor? Friday night?
Friday night, the PIT. I walk into the PIT, and Kenny and his daughters were sitting there, Carol and me and our grandson. And he says, "I just sent you a text." Terrific. And I'm thinking, "He sent me a text about the game? The game's not all that terrific." I'm confused. He says, "Yeah, I sent it about 10 or 15 minutes ago." And I look at the clock, I'm thinking, "Well, there's not enough time off the clock. The clock, the game is still young." Then it dawns, Mayor, catch up with the conversation. He had gotten the book, and had sat down and spent 20 minutes before the game with it, and sent me a text saying, "Terrific, and I appreciate that."
It is, and Vice Mayor, you're exactly right, and that's why I did what I did, because this is the information we need to have, and this is the stuff we need to... We have answers, we still have to make the decisions, but we want to make sure we get everybody's input in it. But you're right, you're spot on. I thought it was great, and Friday night, I never thought I'd be Friday night, late to a basketball game, reading this, but I started and I couldn't finish, because it was answering and providing some data that we had all asked, and that's important to me, and I hope the rest of this council. Yes, sir.
When's a good time to speak about the retreat, or discuss the retreat, because we didn't talk about it?
Anytime's a good time. I mean, as soon as, in my view, hopefully, we're planning in that direction, as soon as we get out of this budget season, we need to go into some of these things that would start setting us on a pace to be able to step away from some of these tripwires, and you won't get there until we do that. But unfortunately, we keep getting these time-compressed activities that get in here that we gotta get out of the way. So, I'm hopeful we'll be able to do that by this summer.
Yes, in fact, we want some guidance, we being Deborah and me. We actually talked within the last five days about this, and we agreed that we needed to bring it up either at this meeting or your next... You don't have a work session on the 23rd, because you have the Commonwealth's Attorney thing. But we need to decide on when. Summer's what we're thinking, but we want to make sure that we respect your summer plans. How long? A day, a day and a half, so that there's an overnight aspect? Because there's a lot of bonding that takes place, even in the public, when you have a meal together. I mean, 2,000 years ago, we had meals that were very important, and I think there ought to be a couple of meal functions. And then you. Sometimes people get concerned about going out of town and the cost, but sometimes that guarantees 100% attendance from start to finish. So, some of the things that Deborah and I talked about was the possibility of going to Williamsburg. It's out of town, but it's not that far. Doing it overnight, like Friday afternoon, Friday evening, and then Saturday to right after lunch and be done with. But we need your guidance. You need to tell us, "No, a Friday/Saturday doesn't make sense, Williamsburg doesn't make sense, stay here, do it at Badawi, do it at the Renaissance." We need your direction on that.
Plonio Portsmouth is a good location.
Sir, yeah, Plonio Portsmouth, that's good. I like that.
Go right to Badawi.
So, is your preference?
I'm flexible. I mean, again, there are positives with being able to step out of town, make sure everyone is here, and we...
You want to think about it, and we'll send you correspondence, and you can show us your preference, and we'll... And we want to pick a place, too, that's conducive for the... And we want to pick a place, too, that's conducive for the public, because the public will be there. And we don't need to make it difficult for them. So how about if we do this? We broke the ice tonight. We'll send you some dates. We'll start. Is June better, or July, or August?
Dates and cost factors.
Yes, sir. Got it.
Okay.
The other thing, I wanted to make sure that you, you saw the jail study. It's two documents. And you saw the cost. That's the outside cost. That's $27 million. It's a very good study, but I don't think that we, we need time, we, that's us, need time to digest this. The jail authority needs time to digest this, too.
Regional jail.
Yes, ma'am. There's some discussion about the possibility of Chesapeake coming in to the jail. Whether or not that happens, don't know. So I don't think we need to, first, we can't afford $27 million. So I don't think that's your priority. And again, that's the upside number. I talked with the jail superintendent today. There's nobody holding us by the neck, saying, "You've got to make a decision, or I'm going to choke you." We have time. What's on the jail authority agenda tomorrow is a resolution that asks the General Assembly or the state to create a placeholder for the regional jail, not for Portsmouth, but for the regional jail. And the concept is, is that that resolution says, "Hold a place for us in case we come to you in the future for a capital project, which we want 50% funding." The state code provides this type of funding for the construction of jails. If it's a local jail that serves only one jurisdiction, they'll pay 25 cents on the dollar. They'll pay 25% of the capital cost. And three decades ago, you go to Richmond, you meet with the State Department of Correction, and they lined you up with the General Assembly. Now it's a little bit complicated, because they want to make sure that the jail is needed. They want to prioritize, you know, which jail goes first, this one over here in locality A, or this one over here in B or C. For a regional jail, and this has been on the books for a long time, to incentivize communities coming together, the state will pay 50 cents on the dollar. And so if the jail costs $40 million, the state will pay 20. And so that's what is on the agenda tomorrow at the regional jail, is a resolution to create a placeholder. Yes, sir.
I think it's a good idea.
You don't need to make a decision anytime soon on that jail. Because if we do anything with the regional jail, the bonds that would be issued would be by the regional jail. They would issue the bonds. They pay the debt service, though, out of the per diem that you... So you're paying it one way or the other. It just doesn't count against your debt. But there's a lot of things to get worked through in order to say, "Yeah, let's go do either A, B, or C." We got to work through those things, and the regional jail authority's got to work for those things. We can dream really big and dream about what that waterfront would look like without the jail there. But you don't have 27 million. You don't have the debt service, whether you pay it directly or indirectly through per diem, to pay 27, or 20, or 15. You've got other priorities. That jail has passed its state inspection. It houses 400 inmates. And something else that we're looking at, I have a black book that's really my brain about information that may come up from time to time. But for utilities, I have in here how much we pay in rental.
In what?
In rental, in renting office space.
Yes.
And what is that bottom line, Roslin? Do you remember, or Dennis? And, okay. The point of the matter is, is that we have three courts buildings over there. The Juvenile Domestic Relation Court building that's vacant is clean. When I say clean, it's clean of asbestos. So it's environmentally sound. And that, remember, has an infield building, a hyphen between the Circuit Court and the J&amp;D Court, the original J&amp;D Court. So the hyphen is clean, and so is the J&amp;D Court. A good portion of the District Court, which is the building that runs parallel to our building here, is clean. And we have units of the police department in that building. But we've got other parts of that building that's not utilized. So we're doing analysis of, does it really make sense, even in the short term? If the short term is five years, to continue to lease property downtown? Why not take them in and put them in these clean buildings, do whatever internal modifications we need to make? The chief needs a briefing room. Walks into one of the district courtrooms. That's it. We could use it. So there's courtrooms, there's conference rooms, there's open spaces where you could put workstations, there's administrative offices. And so if it's okay with you, I'll continue to do this analysis. It will hopefully save us money by not having to lease this property. It will save us efficiencies. We won't have to figure out, you know, where do you have to go to go to this particular unit in the police department? How spread out? How many buildings are you spread out to?
13, 13 different facilities.
You can get all 13 of them in this?
There's a lot of space over there. And we're going to get a cost estimate to remove the asbestos in the Circuit Court building. The way that building is constructed is that the air handling system is a plenum. It's the space between the ceiling towels and the floor joists, okay? It's not ducts, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
But to fireproof the building, back in the days when the best fireproofing material was asbestos, they sprayed the underside of the floor joists with asbestos. And so it sits in that plenum. And as long as it stays on there, you know, you're okay. But once it starts flaking off and gets airborne, it gets carried throughout the building.
No problem.
We cleaned the J&amp;D Court building, like I said a couple of years ago. These buildings are pretty much sound structurally. I mean, there might be a roof leak here and there. But we're going to develop a cost, too, to clean the Circuit Court building. As much, again, it would be wonderful to draw buildings on the map, and parks, and fountains there. We're ways from getting there. We're ways from getting there. Think about the cost to move into jail, then think about the cost of demolition, and think about what you read in the paper. There was a downtown development announced last week in Norfolk. And what percent of, did the city put in? About 40 to 45%. There was a similar deal that was discussed at Virginia Beach within the last 12 months or so. If you look at the ratio, another 45 to 50%. So moving the jail, cleaning the site, or demolishing the site, doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're going to get the development that you want. And I've been with you when council debated every point in time, are we going to have to maybe put money into residential development?
That's true.
That was a conversation that council had in 2007. So the punchline is, is that that's a very comprehensive study. You don't need to make a decision that's rash. Take the time to look at this. The regional jail needs to look at it. We need to get financial advisor, talking to financial advisor. The regional jail has a financial advisor. We have the time to figure out exactly what is the best alternative for us, and the regional jail has the time to figure out the best alternative for them. Does that all make sense?
Oh, yeah, it does.
Just to make sure we get that data, and we all...
Put it in writing.
Yeah.
Have you got any, I mean, this might be a bad question to ask, but have you got anybody knocking on the door about the property?
No. Okay.
Took you a long time to answer.
So I guess based on that, we need to drive forward, and we can save some money. And we just had a lot of conversations about where we can use money. So if you can save us some, let's do it.
Yes, sir.
All right. John, thank you very much. Good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Very productive.
I love this morning.
I thought it was fun.
I thought it was fun.